...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we have some new employees to introduce, so I will call on someone in the health department.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, Commissioners. It is my pleasure, and I will start to my far right, and I'll start with Debra Murray, because we believe in recycling in public health, and Debra was a fine employee with us for seven years. And thought the grass might be a little greener, but she left and now she's come back. So we're really tickled to have Debra Murray back with us. And Debra has two children, and she has two grandchildren, which is kind of hard for me to believe, but she does. She's a lifetime resident of Lee County. And she likes yard sales, and she likes going to church. And we're just delighted that she applied and came back to a vacant position here in Alworth. So, welcome back, Debra. And to my immediate right is Eldica Graham. And Eldica is our lead interpreter of the Health Department. Eldica is a native of Panama. And she, there she attended Inter-American University of Panama for three years. And she was with the U.S. Army as a civilian contract specialist for 25 years and retired from the feds in 1998. Here again, it's hard to believe. She has been in Fayetteville for 11 years and worked with the Public Health Department in Cumberland County for six years. She has two daughters. She has a daughter 34 and 27. And she also is graduating, graduated from college on May 24th with a degree in banking and finance. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. She attends St. Luke AME Church, and she holds a position as a secretary for the Sunday School. So we're a little tickled that Eldica is with us. So I present the...
Right. If you will come forward, please. Debra, welcome back.
Thank you.
And I give you a hand to be in the grounds. I'm going to go there. You have a good brown hand, you're a man in great time.
It's pretty good to be down in there.
That little girl's cold enough.
No. That's a board, though.
I was going to get something.
No.
I'm on myself.
My mom, she's flying today.
I was before playing.
Oh, yeah.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Debra, welcome aboard.
I would tell her it's good.
Yeah.
Old tycoons. All right, Social Services. Your thoughts?
Chairman Brown, Members of the Commissioners Board. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Angelina Penna. Penna. She is our Human Services Coordinator in Daycare. She was educated in Buffalo Country. She has a BA, degree in Sociology and Criminal Justice from West Texas A&amp;M. Before coming to Lee County, she worked in Cumberland County, Department of Social Services, and then came into case work for her in Medicaid. So we were now glad to get her here. She's, she and her fiance have purchased a house, and so they've been spending every waking moment remodeling and fixing up the house to make it their own. I think her father-in-law is, he owns the Century Concrete?
Century Stone.
Century Stone. Added, they'll, you know, out of the research triangle type area. Over here, we have Ken Creekey. Ken is our new administrative officer. Took us a while to fill the position, but I think we did, you know, we did well with it. He has a BA in Public Administration, and he's just finishing up his master's in Public Administration at Pembroke. His graduate studies had a concentration in planning and strategic development, I think. And did his graduate internship with the county manager in Robinson County, and he worked on their five-year capital improvement plan. Had 14 years in the military before joining the Department of Homeland Security, and then under Lee County. His teacher, I mean, his wife is a teacher of what, exception?
He's, he's, she's got to interview this Wednesday, I think, or we're going to have to.
Oh, he's putting that plug in, so we're pleased. She's teaching right now, but again, but she definitely wants to, you know, come to Lee County to work. He and his wife and their three children have been busy house hunting. So they're looking for a reasonably priced, large enough house so he can spread all those females out. You know, he can have some space. So staff, this is our Board of Commissioners.
Okay, two of you will come forward, please. Angelina, if you'll join in us, if you work for this county, if you say you're North Carolina. We look forward to seeing a lot of, and I believe I met you last week. Welcome, more than anything, I'm glad to have you. If you'd like to come over, if you think it's a joy.
Of course, I would.
All right, I believe we have one from the jail. Chairman.
Chairman Brown, Commissioners. I present to you Kelly McCantless. We too believe in recycling. Ms. McCantless worked for us for a brief time back in 2001, and she went on to pursue other adventures. And she is now coming back to us. She's been in training for the last couple of weeks. And we look forward to having her back. She is a single mom, has an 18-year-old son, and well-planted in Lee County. She's been here since 1994.
If you'll come forward, please. We're glad to have you back. And it's good, always good to see one of these, always come back, we've had two, Jack. I believe our HR Director, Joseph McGee, he has a new employee to...
Please, just kind of do it. Shane, come on up.
As long as he gets introduced.
Mr. Seagrass has joined us as our Fire Marshal, and he is a native of Lee County and served with the City of Sanford Fire Department 14 years prior to coming to work with us. He most recently served them as a captain. Prior to that, he served as a fire inspector and a firefighter-three with the City of Sanford. He is a certified fire inspector of level three and as a fire investigator. He has been an active instructor for the Office of State Fire Marshal since 1994. He's also served on the North, the Board of Directors for the Northview Fire Department here in Lee County. He belongs to the North Carolina Professional Firefighters and Paramedics Association, the International Association of Professional Firefighters, and the North Carolina International Association of Arson Investigators, and the North Carolina Fire Marshals Association. We're glad to have Shane on board.
Shane, if you'll come forward. We're glad to have you.
I want to say that Shane, that way, he had two meetings together, marathon meetings last week, and I'm really glad he's here, and he brings a lot to the table, so glad you're here.
Okay, I think that takes care of the employee situation. I will now ask for additional agenda items, and we have, you should have at your desk, Item E and Item F to be added to new business, and Item C to be added to management. I would also like to, to pull from the agenda, the closed session, which is Item 9, and insert under new business, Item G, which will be consideration of the contract for the city ma, or county manager. Also, I'm informed that... Man, clerk, what, what line item is that?
A under new business.
A under new business, request to appear before the Board. Ms. Green has contacted our clerk, and she will not be able to be here, so we need to pull that item also. Any other budgets? Mr. Rades?
I think it's under the supplemental. I'd be happy to...
Yep, we got that. Medical and law?
Yes.
Mr. Shul. I hear your motion that the agenda be approved as amended. Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. I will now ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Oh, move, Chairman.
Although in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It is sub-ordered. We now come to the public comment section, and we have one who has requested to make a public comment, and I will recognize this time, Mr. Dorf, it's you, Bursey. Welcome, Ms. Bursey.
Thank you.
And I would make mention that we limit the comments to three minutes.
They'll be short and sweet, but I represent District 2, and I'm very concerned that we don't have any representation from our area at the present time. And there has been a nominee suggested, and most of the folks that I know that live where I do and around in my neighborhood are certainly in support of Mr. Smith, and we're hoping that the Board would see fit to install him as the new Commissioner on the Board. We'd like to be represented by him. We feel that this has been the custom in the past, when a nominee of any either party has been nominated, it's normally been the procedure that they would be approved. I understand that it's been put off now until Ju, June, and I was questioning that, wondering why it would need that length of time for deliberation. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Bursey. It will be on the agenda for the June 4th meeting, and the motion was made that it be not tabled, but that it be deferred until a time and date certain, and that time and date certain was our meeting for Ju, for June 4th.
I see.
So we will act on it come June 4th. Is that correct, Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you very much. I hope you will consider the people that I've spoken with. And I do live in Carolina Trace, but I know a number of people in the area. And we're all very much in favor of it, and certainly hope that you would consider.
There being no one else signed up, we'll now go to public hearings, and we have two that are scheduled. The first one being a public hearing regarding industrial project for revenue bonds for System Blast LLC. Recognize, Mr. Hall, and I will now open the public hearing on this item. Mr. Hall.
Is the next information given in your agenda that the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority has undertaken a project with the Systems Blast people, and they are asking this Board to approve in principle the project. It calls for the issuance of $7,500,000 in industrial revenue bonds, which will be proceeds from which the sale of which will be loaned to System Blast to finance construction and equipment of a facility of approximately 218,000 square feet for the manufacture of conveyor systems and related products. The facility will be located at 2,000 Boone Trail Road, Sanford, and is expected to create jobs of around 50. Under the terms of the loan agreement, the payment of the principal and purchase price of and the interest on the bonds will be secured by an irrevocable direct pay letter of credit issued by a bank. And the resolution approves also a plan of financing. The plan of financing in request that we petition the Federal Tax Reform Allocation Committee to allot up to the amount of the bonds from the state's allocation of private activity bonds. And this does not involve in the county endorsing or being financially liable on its full faith and credit is not pledged to these. The rent and occupancy and use of premises will pay back to the bank, and if they don't pay off, the bank will pay off.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Do I hear anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hughes is here from the Economic Development Corporation, and Mr. Irwin, the attorney for this project, is also present.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissions, I am here to speak in favor of this project. As we have before, discussed this particular company. They've been in this community for a number of years, I think close to 10 years now, operating out of a small facility, actually two small facilities on Watkins Road. This is a significant expansion for them, and will actually be closing some facilities in other parts of the country and bringing them here to Sanford. So this financing will be in place for a company that we're very familiar with here in this community. Any questions?
Anyone other who would like to speak in favor?
I'd be happy to answer any questions about the bond process, if anyone has any, but other than that...
Anyone who wish to speak in opposition to the request? There being none, I will close this public hearing and move on to the next public hearing, which is regarding industrial projects and revenue bonds for Challenge Printing Company of the Carolinas. Now, the public hearing can recognize again our attorney, Mr. Hall.
This is a similar procedure with respect to Challenge Printing Company of the Carolinas. The Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority is asking the Board to approve a resolution improving in principle this project in the amount of $6 million, proceeds of which will be loans. Challenge Printing Company of the Carolinas, and they will construct and equip a facility of approximately 44,000 square feet, and they manufacture labels. This facility will be located at the corner of Wam, Wamak Road and Clyde Ryan Drive in the industrial park, and is expected to create approximately 65 jobs. Just like the other one, this will be secured by a letter of credit issued by a bank, and again, does not involve the county being assuming liability for the project, and its full faith and credit is not pledged in this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Anyone to speak in favor of this request? I assume Mr. Hughes will come again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Again, speaking in favor of this particular project, this system, I mean, Challenge Printing has been in Broadway, located in Broadway for a little bit better than 10 years, and it just outgrown the space. And this is an opportunity, first of all, for us to keep them in Lee County. They chose, after looking at a number of other locations, to go ahead and build, buy a site and build at the industrial park on the north side of town. And we're very excited about them with their, their expansion plans, and so... Anyone speaking in favor of that, Robert?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is the attorney, the attorney for them also?
Yes, sir, that's correct. John Irwin with Lieutenant Williams. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the bond process.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor? All right, anyone to speak in opposition? There being none heard, I will close the public hearing, and I will call for a vote by the, by a motion that the Chairman be authorized to sign these requests.
Mr. Chairman, you want to do this individually, or you want to...
Do it individually.
Okay.
The first one, be the System Blast.
I move to approve the request for Systems Blast.
All right, any discussion among the Commissioners?
I just want to make sure that taxpayers understand there is no local, state, or federal tax dollars being used here, right, Mr. Hoel? And when I got my agenda packed, I didn't know anything about these kind of items, so I did some research, and there are some economic development commissions from other states that do charge an application fee. So I was asking Mr. Hughes and Mr. Hoel about that. Mr. Irwin, it's in our statute, but, our statutes, but it might be something we want to consider, because it just gives a little bit of seed money. If this application for these bonds are approved, it gives the Economic Development Commission a little bit of money to use for incentives that maybe we don't have to use so much taxpayer dollars for. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. This, these two recommendations here, they need to have a second. So do I hear any of that? Any more discussion, although in favor of Item A, which is concerning bonds for System Blast LLC? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's sub-ordered. Move on now for a motion concerning revenue bonds for Challenge Printing Company of the Carolinas. So your motion. Most have been made, is there a second? Most have been made and seconded. Any further discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Vote is unanimous. Item A has been scratched for this meeting. Now move on to Item B, which is Rick Capital's CDC request to build office on county property. Have response to that by Mr. John Payne. It's on page 34 through 37. Mr. Payne is here, and I'm now recognizing him.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Phil Wilson is, is here, and I assume he's in, in regards to this, is that right? Mr. Wilson, you have some...
I'm here as a taxpayer of Lee County. That's where I'm here. I come off at the meetings.
I thought you might have been here since Kate was out of town.
I have a real interest in that hill over there.
Okay. My concern, Commissioners, is, is with the community room and the amount of parking that's going to be made available. There is no statement or indication in here as to how much additional parking is going to be provided with that building. And most of our activities occur at 5:00, after 5:00, and on weekends, which assumes when that community space will be most used. And so we could run into some issues with folks having enough room to park. I just wanted some assurances that any additions would have sufficient parking out there that we won't, we won't have to send a cop out there to referee parking spaces.
Okay.
When was the last time we had that kind of problem?
Well, we have.
Okay.
What do you have going on out there on the weekends?
We have facility rooms out there on the weekends. Could be basketball teams, volleyball teams. Sometimes it's a birthday party. Most often, it's, it's a church group that's putting on a basketball tournament.
And they're usually scheduled, and we do like, we deal with anyone else. We notify them of what's taking place. We work it out. I, I don't want to see us create a problem that doesn't exist. I don't mind planning.
Right, and I don't either, Mr. Rades. But, you know, I just want us to be sure we know what we're getting into when we do these things.
Hey, you, you know, I live over that way, and I see the traffic at all the parks. And there's no real overpass.
Right.
Do you know how much space the, the building itself would occupy?
The building itself, 3,500 square feet, according to their question.
There'd be space around the building, right? On all sides.
They have a strip, Navy, Rick Capital, they have a strip between our property and the houses that they develop from Church Street. There is a strip of land there. And Kate and I talked, took around some ideas before using that as open space, green space, perhaps a soccer field or something for the community, which, you know, is fine. And I think that's where they proposed to do the, they're calling it parking in green space on the, on the draw.
I believe in the letter that you sent to me, that you're requesting that we not act on this today, but we give your Board a chance to make a recommendation.
Well, I, I think our Board needs to be apprised of issues like this that involve park property or park programs. It needs to come before our Board first for a recommendation. And that's why we have an advisory board.
Do we have an architectural plan on the proposed construction, so...
All I have is what you have, Commissioners.
That would probably be, what we have is the first step. We first must determine whether we're going to allow it or not before anybody's spending...
Right, right, right. Right, right, yeah.
Secondly, I'm going to address the parking. It appears that they made the plans to accommodate spaces for the building. So any overflow wouldn't necessarily be their responsibility or their fault, based on this drawing. So I wouldn't worry about that. I agree, I think you're right. When did you learn of this?
When it was placed on the agenda, and I got the request. When it was placed on the Board of Commissioners' agenda.
They have, in the drawing, they have this property that they're wanting extending all the way down to Dance Street. Anything on Dance Street that they occupy, or they want to occupy.
They're showing, those dotted lines on that drawing, Chairman Brown, that is the grassy area that's owned by the county. That's just denoting that grassy area owned by the county. I don't have the dimensions.
So their request is not for that, their request is just a place to put the building?
Right, just for the building in that lighter color, and then the darker colors designated as parking and open space.
I move that this be tabled until, you know, both groups have had a chance to, the Brick Capital and Parks and Recreation Board have had a chance to talk, so that everybody knows what the expectations are.
And I think the chairman and here and Mr. Payne need to get with Mr. Romly, bring that information back to us, is that correct?
Which information?
About the land, the many parking spaces she's going to estimate, she's going to...
Won't that be set by the zoning consultants?
Yeah, besides the building, and it's going to be a public building, so it wouldn't be, so they're going to have to be involved in it also.
Right, the issue at hand is actually the, I thought these dots represented the land that Brick Capital was requesting.
That was what I meant when I asked the question.
I'll be glad. You wrote the letter back in, is this your letter, May 10th? Come on up. Did you write it May 10th?
Yes.
You wrote, did you make any contact with Ms. Romly before then?
Yes, we had a telephone conversation.
You were not alone.
And I asked Ms. Romly the same questions that I asked you, why didn't you come before the Parks and Recreation Board, you know, initially? So they could get a recommendation from that board.
I recognize Councilor Wilson.
I can't speak for Kate Romly, as she is on vacation, well-deserved vacation, Mr. Chairman, but I can say this, we certainly are not trying to do anything to interfere with Parks and Recreation. That was a piece of property owned by the county. The, what we propose in the map we showed you here is that we would be using our space, which is, Mr. Payne just mentioned, as additional parking. I think that space would benefit what you already have there. We're not going to have parties and things all the time. Our facility would be used more during the day than on weekends and at nights, when their primary are over there. So I think we're augmenting what's already there in terms of additional parking. And that certainly won't be something that we wouldn't be aiming to, and certainly not do anything to cause any cause with the recreational facilities already there owned by the county. We don't intend to do that. What our whole purpose is to have a presence on that hill, because we have a significant investment that we partner a few of to put over there. And I think if you haven't seen it, we'd ask that you go over and see it, but we've put a substantial amount of time and energy and money into that hill, and we want, we need to be there, because we have tenants there who need us there. And that, and in addition, we're going to build a first-class facility to have some meeting rooms that people would use during the day. And I think that Kate mentioned in her letter, possibly civic clubs and those kinds of activities. But what I see over there during the day, we certainly wouldn't interfere with anything that goes on. And we would have additional parking that we use for all the citizens of Lee County. So I don't see it being a detriment to anything that's there. I think we're just supplement and just be available to everybody.
Would it be correct to, you're talking about actually relocating from where you are to your main office over there?
That's correct, because we're there now.
Like we used to...
We maintain the building. We have the responsibility of managing the building.
Right.
And that's not something that we planned when we started out, but it ended up working out that way. And we're the ones responsible. We're there all day now. We have at least five tenants in that building, and there are issues that come up all the time when you have tenants.
It's a valuable management resource. Let me mention two things really quick, Mr. Chair. One, in this community space, one of the things I recall of being, hearing about or mentioning to me was the possibility of, I can't even think of it, neighborhood police stations having space for a neighborhood police operation. So it's not, it's not a community building as such. They're just including space that could be used for community purposes, and it's not a community center. Secondly, it may have been coming here because the county owned the land, not the Parks and Recreation, and we dealt with the right-of-way and other issues regarding Wicker School properties through this board and not Recreation Board. That may be why they wound up here, started. I don't think it was any reflection against Parks and Recreation. It's just a procedural matter that has always been here, because we were dealing with land in the parking spaces in the past.
Certainly, I discussed this with Ms. Romly, and we never intended to do an end-around on the Parks and Recreation Board. That was not the intent. I think we knew we had to end up before this board. We never thought that we'd have an issue about parking, because we don't intend to be bad neighbors, and we have, we plan for additional parking on our own land now. So certainly, no, nothing against the Parks and Recreation, and we did not try to do that.
All right, you have a motion on the table, on the floor, to table this, and I'll soon table it until our June the 4th meeting?
Well, just until...
Well, he will have a chance to have his meeting. I believe you got a meeting scheduled.
Parks and Recreation Board meets next week, yes.
So they will meet before then.
I would ask that we amend it to table until such time, on condition that if they were in support of it, that we go ahead and approve it, get this thing moving. You'll amend your motion to that effect.
There, you're saying, if they approve it, it don't come back in the board?
It needs to.
What about that? Okay. Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Is so ordered. Unanimous.
Thank you.
We also have another request from Brick Capital CDC for a signage at WB Wicker Business Campus. You have a drawing of a sign that they wish to erect over there. So what's your question? I think that we have to conform, be in conformity with the UCO, so we don't really have a final saying on how the sign is, or the size, and whatever of the sign.
I think that they are in compliance, and it just needs this board to approve, because it's our land, the same land you're talking about. I would do it with approval.
Okay, most have been made to approve. Any discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered, unanimous. Recognize Mr. Mike Haynes, who requests to hire new dentists for the children's dental clinic, and that's located over there where we're talking about.
Exactly, it's a nice segue. Yes, we, our current dentist has applied and been sent back into school to be an orthodontist. So we are losing him. We have done pretty well this year, and since we opened it up to a larger catchment area, we are being self-sustaining since February. So it's going well.
That's really good news. That was really good news.
It is good news. Yes, sir.
I mean, children of yours?
Over the years, or just...
No, just this year, just maybe children.
We're seeing, right now, we're seeing about 220 or better children a month. So that's pretty good. And that's at a level where we are financially self-sustaining. And of course, we are in partnership with Community College, and their hygiene program, where they're teaching, training dental assistants and hygienists. It is a one-of-a-kind, it's a first-of-a-kind partnership like this in the state of North Carolina. It so happens that, I talked with the dean of the UNC School of Dentistry about a week ago, and he's actually speaking at the Rotary Club tomorrow, and he's going to come over and see our facility tomorrow afternoon. And hopefully, we can get some support from them in that endeavor. But having said all that, just to kind of catch up on what we've been doing, we have, we always work closely with the Office of Rural Health Care, and tries to get professionals to come out outside the Raleigh Durham area to practice. And we have come across Dr. Sun, who is from China. He practiced dentistry for three, over three years there, and came to North Carolina with his family, and got a master's at Chapel Hill, but decided, ended up going to school, because Harvard would give him the degree in two years, since he had already been practicing for over three. And so he's going to be a graduate of Harvard Dental School, and he's willing to come and work with us. But I needed to come before you guys and request a salary that is just, I think it's $2,000 or $3,000 more than what our current dentist would be making in July, so it's not, and is in keeping with what dentists, what dentists make in North Carolina, and even in the public health sector.
Do you have the money in your budget for the rest of this year?
For the rest of these days, if Dr. Sun comes, it's going to be at the very last two weeks or so of June, so we're okay this year. So we would have to make maybe a small adjustment for next year. I would say too, it is true that North Carolina, we're going to talk to the dean about it a little bit, North Carolina brings up 47 in the nation in dentistry capital. So that means 46 states have more dentists per population than North Carolina. And so that makes it tough, recruiting and retaining dentists. That's just a reality. Maybe the BCU school, when it gets up and going, will make a difference, but it's very tough.
I would move to approve, based on recognition, direct in the House Board.
All right, most have been made to approve the request. Any further discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Very lovely.
Mr. Haynes, thank you also. I mean, serving that many kids in the community, and Mr. Bill Wilson, all the hard work y'all have put over there, Mr. Kate Romly. It's amazing to walk over there and see the partnership that people have done by putting their heads together and thinking outside the box. I know it's a cliche to say, but y'all have, y'all really made an impact on Lee County's quality of life. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I agree with that, and I would advise any citizen to go over there and see what's been done, with that building, it gets a beautiful building inside and out.
And we thank Mr. Wilson, Kate, and, you know, Community College, and it's wonderful.
You just walk down that little, little hallway there, and you got dentist chairs all down through, from beginning to end.
Right. I think the dean's going to be very impressed, like, see.
I'm sure. Thank you.
And we thank you all for being our partners.
Thank you. All right, we move on now to item E, which you have before you get into supplemental agenda, and that's a resolution adopting Lee County capital improvement program, which is from FY 2007, 2008 through 2011, 2012. Recognize Lee Reeves.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you, the President speaks for itself. If I have any questions, they're my service.
I think I already talked with Chairman Lamont about, for the next fiscal year, the $500,000 for the restoration of Sandy Park Dam, but he explained to me that the situation is we have to at least show an appropriation, and that it most likely will not cost the taxpayers that amount of money.
Finance Committee is not writing a check. We just, we just showing them the money, that's all we're doing. We're working with them to try and find grants that might support that endeavor. We think that there may be some other alternative that haven't explored, that's an organization that's...
Resources to keep.
Nonprofit organization that does a lot of its work across the state, and that's where we're going to start. The money is just in place in the event that we have to take immediate action, but...
I realize there are some liability issues there, too, if we don't do that, so...
That's hard to say. We're not in compliance already, and we need to show a good-thought effort.
And this is something that's really been going on, Kenny, for how long?
Been here since 2004.
Okay. And when I came on board in 2000, it was, it was known then around $700,000. And this is something that I've been working on since we joined with Environmental Impact, which is a five-county group that does things like this, like the Buchanan Park and this Sandy Lee Park Project. But it is something that needs to be addressed, and the sooner the better, because with the damn safety and everything, the information we have, that could be $500, $500.
That's not the way he meant that.
Well, yeah.
We got to check on the last type you said.
What's your language?
Oh, you have to check the spelling.
You know, you can see the spelling on these. You hear the words.
Okay, any further discussion on this, or your motion that it be approved?
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
No further discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered, unanimous. Move on to item else, the qualified sum, academy bond, applicant, QZAB, Lee County Schools. Approved 14 applications for qualified sum, academy bond, QZAB, in parentheses, funding. The QZAB program is a federally funded program that allows students to request financial assistance through government resources, and it is an attachment fee of your supplemental agenda. Recognize Ms. Minter, the county manager, and she can call upon who she needs.
As I stated, last, late last week, we received the applications from the school board. They were notified back around April 9th of the potential for the issuance of qualified zone academy bonds by the state of North Carolina. They stand to receive potentially $500,000 to $2 million. They are submitting applications to hopefully receive a full $2 million funding, however they could receive less or none. This has been done several times before. It's not guaranteed funding every year. I think the last issuance was in 2004. If they receive the funding, they are looking at doing three roof repairs, and then technology at several of the different schools. If the funding is approved, we are responsible for issuing the debt. They are 0% bonds. The way it works, the payment for the bonds is due at the end of the term, which could be 14 to 16... be 14 to 16 years. However, we establish a sinking fund with a bank to establish the payback. And of course, we would be bidding that out for it to get the best interest rate paid to us on the sinking fund. So ultimately, you would end up paying back out of your funds less than what you've ended up borrowing. So it's something we have encouraged the schools over the years to look into for renovation and repair work. But I wish we could get more, so maybe we could really address some issues at the high school, but the amount of funding is limited. So they will, of course, have to go through the application process, wait for notification. We have up to two years after receiving notification to issue the financing. Worst-case scenario I've looked at is if we did, got $2 million and just took $2 million and spread it, forget the fact that we earned interest on the money, it'd be approximately $143,000 a year. So that would be the worst-case scenario over 14, 15 years.
So we issue the debt, but we get reimbursed from the state of North Carolina, or from, how does that, how does that work?
We issue the debt, we get the money from the bank, it's turned over to the schools, but then our payback is via a sinking fund, so that you actually end up paying back less than you borrowed, because you're earning interest on the money that you're putting in the sinking fund. It's kind of, it's very similar to an installment purchase contract that we would do, but instead of paying interest, they're paying us interest.
And they put our mail in to begin with.
There is a 10% match required that the schools have allocated, managed to obtain through Boys and Girls Club and/or the YMCA, through tutoring, et cetera, at the schools to meet their 10% match.
We have Dr. McGoyne, Dr. Atkinson here. Y'all want to address that issue?
We, Dr. Atkinson has managed to bring in the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA as partners in this. But Mrs. Minter's done a real good job of summarizing it.
I've got a couple, got two. Ms. Minter called me on Friday, and we talked about this. I have some questions. And the first one I asked her was, what if you applied, got accepted, and we weren't in a position financially to take care of the debt? Is there penalty involved in our accepting or your applying? How does that work?
From my understanding, we would deny the request. The first payment, as I understand it, again, I think Tammy and Lisa may have talked about this a little bit, would be in the 2008, 2009 fiscal year. Our board was very adamant about coming before you and asking for any additional funding or financing during 2007, 2008.
Or do you understand what I'm asking you? When we got notice of it, we had no react time. I understand it's gotta be in by May 31st. May 30th? May 30th? Sure.
We were just notified April 9th, Texas, when we got.
It came on the Wednesday during spring break. We went to work on it on Monday, whatever Monday it was, the 15th or so, 16th. What we did was match this against some requests that we have put in place with the, with the county commissioners. You might recall from your capital improvement plan last year, the three roofs brought to your attention appeared in your proposed budget and approved, but obviously out of year two or three. We've spaced each of them over three years. The other, the technology, is something, as a matter of fact, Mrs. Shook brought up at your retreat, at Broadway Community Building, the idea that we would take short-term pieces of equipment and possibly have in your capital improvement plan. So with Lisa's help, Mrs. Minter's help, and we began to understand how your new budget process goes, we included that in our capital allocation question this year. What we're gonna wind up with, ladies and gentlemen, is a 100-megabit network running throughout our systems, from firewall to the last computer in the district, and we're gonna have equipment in our buildings that operate at 100 megabit or larger. And we're working with switches that are five and 10 megabits. So what we wind up with is power and power of a chokehold. So we took the four requests, the three roofs in the capital improvement plan from last year, and this need for these new switches to make this a very powerful network. We didn't introduce anything new into the equation. We thought we'd be out of bounds there.
All right, let me ask this question. Suppose we reached the point, we being our board versus your board, that we were not in agreement on those four items and maybe wanted to go a different direction. How do we work that kind of deal out? Because that's why timing, to me, is so important, because you ought to have some kind of agreement on the front end. It sounds right now as if you have the format laid out, whether we agree or not, we just gotta turn it over to you.
Well, it's, on at least three of the items, we appear to be in agreement. The roofs need to be replaced, your documents and our documents. I think it's the funding issue on those three roofs. As far as technology goes, we see that as a need, and we took your guidance from the retreat.
Well, all I'm trying to tell you is that board changes dictate where we go on certain items. So my question remains, how do we work that out? And if we have enough time on the front end, we can work those deals. If we don't, this is short notice, I may be voting to do something that locks me in on a deal that may not be good for me six months from now or six days from now.
I think that question goes back to your first question, sir.
The only thing I'm.
I'll wait until I answer that.
If I could answer, part of that is that we had looked at our meeting needs as far as what we thought would be something that would be beneficial to the system and students. And the roofs were definitely one that we needed immediately, because we're patches, our patches, so to speak. So we're in dire need at this point, to try to get that, take care of it before it becomes a disaster, to tell the truth.
It says here, the school program must be designed in cooperation with business. So what is the processes involved there? Who are your business partners?
The private businesses that we have are the Cleveland County, the Lee County Boys and Girls Club. Excuse me, I'm waiting back for you.
Yeah, you get the money, we'll.
The Lee County Boys and Girls Club, as well as the Sandy Park County YMCA. We have sought information from DPI, from Daniel Boyett and Dr. Ben Matthews, and also spoke with Kelly, Diane Kelly, SMGC, to make sure that what we were doing was going to be in compliance and in line, that they were not, those private businesses would in fact be in compliance with the, with the law.
I guess I misinterpreted this. I thought it, I'm thinking private business sector, you know, and rather than nonprofit.
Initially, we did too, and then we, when we pursued it, and I have been writing to make sure that we did cover that. I think I emailed this mentor with those two items, and spoke with Miss Kelly again today, to make sure that we were being compliant and out of bounds when it came to, quote-unquote, private sector.
I guess, you know, just seeing this for the first time, I'm uncomfortable. I share some concerns, Commissioner Reeves, and I understand the timeframe here. I would like to have, just, I don't even know what I don't know here yet.
Before you go, let me, let me interject this. The deadline, I think you just said, is May 30th?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we go forward with it, with the proviso that we come together again and work out some of these concerns, because we don't have to take it, we can stop at any point. But I won't notice that we will. But this, I'm afraid, is an example of what concerns me most about boards of commissioners and boards of education. Last-minute drop-ins cause significant concern to board members who are responsible for paying the notes, and that's what we're looking at here. And I think that we have more time to hash out some of what we're talking about right now. You'd have a better chance of us being on board 100%. I know you'd have to vote, but I think for the whole part, we're gonna take the risk and go and be in line to receive it if it comes through.
Like, like Mr. Reeves, the first I heard of it was Friday also, and I would say that the three members of the finance committee did mention this, and, and we do have some concerns, but I tend to agree with Mr. Reeves that we ought to go ahead and beat the deadline, and we can withdraw. And even if the time comes that they approve the fund, we don't have to take it.
Lisa, has anybody contacted the Association of County Commissioners in North Carolina about this process?
Yes, sir.
We have worked with several school districts who have done this. Board of Education in Lee County has been talking about this for a number of years. It was one of the first things on the list in early 2005. We began to look into it, and by the time we started to look at applications, Jim's appeared up right around 2006. They didn't make any money available. So as this was dropped on us April 9th, again, Jim Hawking and Andy Howings were talking with some people in another district that have done it at least three times, and that's Harney County. And we've talked with some in Randolph County, realized that 0%, interest over the long term, and getting the money upfront to invest, and at least understanding that there is some note of a common interest in at least three of the four projects, we went ahead and we moved on. But again, I mean, Mr. Reeves' point, your point, is not out of bounds as far as timing of the conversation. I think we might have had a light conversation with county management, and so it's, but again, a timing issue. We got our last letter today from Stacy Craft, the Y, trying to get everything in line. And with your meeting schedule and our board's meeting schedule, this would have been an interesting challenge. But the idea that we would, would have, would have lower, lower expenses, at some point we'll replace it, because at some point, we're gonna put these switches in. The idea that it's at 0%, and if we hash out these, and I don't think there's misunderstanding, I think it's a matter of just hashing out a common understanding.
I think that's true. We're not, at least I'm not blaming you for anything. I'm simply saying timing is of the essence.
I hear that.
And we gotta move forward. But certainly, the fact that Dr. Atkinson knows about it from years past doesn't help this board or the members who don't know anything about it, except as a request to go on, on record as saying, we'll take care of the notes. That's all we're saying.
Well, I know when the county manager called me about it, she was calling with QZAB, and I didn't even know what QZAB stood for until today.
Try to stay away from the acronyms wherever possible.
Well, the wiring and the switching, how does that play into your renovation plans? Will any of that have to be relocated, or?
No, I'm talking with Cindy Johnson, who I think several of you have had an opportunity to interact with. Ms. Johnson, talking with our network administrator. You box it up, install it, and of course, Lee County High School would be the prime, the prime concern. Even with roofs, we would probably box up switches. Now, again, it's down the road. Everybody's in agreement, and it's awarded. We have two years to begin the process. So we have time, even beyond May 30th.
Do I have a motion on the floor? Now you want to restate your motion?
That we move forward, and yes, it's timely to move forward with the recommendation to.
And you're, you're authorizing Chairman to sign the paperwork?
Yes, sir. Chairman, QZAB.
Any further discussion? Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Get the final paperwork to us as soon as you can.
Dr. Atkinson is working on it right now. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we move on, I guess, to item G, or let's, let's defer item G, concerning the county manager contract, and go on to manager's report.
Just get in this chair. We had one more piece in it.
Well, that's under.
Oh, under the.
Yeah. That's item C.
You're right.
All right, wrap-up date, Ms. Lippman Price.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've got a couple of items I wanted to update you on, one of which is the wire grant. We should be hearing something first weekend, January, from the Department of Labor, on where we standard for wire grant, which is that $5 million grant that was applied for. The regional marketing initiative, the Cumberland County Workforce Development Board proposed that national emergency grant funds in the amount of $65,000 could be used by the BRAC RTF to promote regional economies, job training, and educational programs. This initiative was the result of a meeting with the North Carolina Department of Labor's Division in Employment and Training, which recommended that the funds be used for promoting this region. The funds must be extended by June 30th of 2007. Twelve companies responded to a request for proposal to develop the BRAC Regional Marketing Initiative. The marketing committee, consisting of five economic developers, recommended, and the BRAC Board of Directors approved, Kelly Morcom, Sanford, and Moonlight Communications for Fayetteville as the selected vendor. Kelly Morcom will develop branding for the BRAC region, which will include, which will consist of a logo and a theme, and they will also develop a brochure and write the script for DVD. They will partner with Moonlight Communications, who will actually produce the DVD. The work is scheduled to be completed by August of 2007. With the economic development update from Greenfield Services, as you know, the BRAC RTF contracted with Greenfield Services for contacting business and defense contractors that have contracts at forces command. To date, approximately 40% of the 61 companies contacted are on a callback, where they have a genuine interest but are not ready to talk specifics. These callbacks range from three months away to one year away. Only six companies contacted have indicated that they will never need a presence in the BRAC region. As I had mentioned, I think at the last board meeting, there was one visit to this region, which included Lee County. And there's another visit scheduled by a different company for June 15th. This visit in June is a meet-and-greet visit at Fort Rag only. Paul Dordahl and Mary Lilly with Greenfield Services will meet the client and introduce them to the region. They will not take them around the region on this visit. The client has time constraints and wants to spend the biggest portion of the day on base. They do not know what their needs are at this point. Greenfield Services will be working to get them back to the region sometime in the summer, when they can spend time and visit several locations. For fiscal year 2007, 2008, the recommended economic development fee for tier-one counties is $15,000. For fiscal year 2007, 2008, the recommended economic development fee for tier-two counties is $10,000. The Comprehensive Regional Growth Plan, 11 firms responded to the request for the RFP, and the cost of their proposals ranged from $449,000 to $1.05 million. BRAC staff and consultants at Novogradic and Company, and that was the company that was hired to write the bid, who's been working with our work groups, reviewed and evaluated each proposal on technical merit and cost. They chose three finalists, Training Development and Associates, whose bid, whose proposal was $1,470, excuse me, $1,47,478. Booth Allen and Hamilton, whose proposal was $940,192. And Louis Verger Group, whose proposal was $977,520. On May 10th, the three finalists pursued their proposals with a six-person evaluation team, consisting of representatives from Lee County, Harney County, the BRAC RTF staff, Novogradic and Company, and the two program managers from the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustments. The evaluation team selected Training Development and Associates from Laurinburg, which is in Scotland County, as the team technically qualified and will provide the best value to develop the plan. Based on the proposals submitted, and the OEA grant for this, the OEA grant for this phase was underestimated. Therefore, grant adjustment request to OEA has been submitted, and if approved, the OEA 10% match by tier-one counties will increase by $8,638, which will be $16,938, is the 10% match of those tier-one counties. The tier-two counties match, of course, is nothing. The proposed fee for 2007, 2008 for tier-one counties is $31,938. The proposed fee for the tier-two counties is $10,000. There has been a committee formed to determine the best way to apportion funding between counties for economic development and other requirements. The committee consists of Ken Winley, who's the Robinson County manager, Greg Taylor, Bladen County Commissioner at large rep for. Bladen County Commissioner at Large Rep for Bladen, Moore, Sampson, and Scotland, Tony Shabani, Mayor of Fayetteville, and Jean Powell, who's a whole county manager. However, it was recommended and approved to accept the fee schedule proposed by the BRAC RTF staff for 2007-2008. And I have with me the oral presentation from TBA and the proposals from the top three with their strengths and their weaknesses. Rock selection was made, if anybody's interested in seeing that.
That's the company from Laurinburg?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm interested. My concern is the same as it always been. All I see is taxpayer money being spent for consulting services. The only ones I see benefiting so far from any of this stuff are consultants. So I'm waiting to see something realistic come in.
Right. Understood.
I think Mr. Moots has had a couple companies.
Brack.
Brack.
Well, there's a vast difference, as you read those numbers out, between the tier-one and tier-two counties in the money we're going to have to invest really to be guaranteed.
Let me ask you a question because I was... This increase of $645,478, what is that for again? I'm looking at phase-two adjustments, five, eight?
They underestimated the proposals from the growth management plan. When they first put the grant together, they just, they threw out, not throw out, they put a figure down of what they would estimate as proposals that would come in and they were underestimated.
And that means what to tier-one counties, anything?
The increase of that difference, we would have to put that 10% match, just they will ask opposite economic adjustment to increase the grant funding.
So would that be less $64,000 if I design?
It's actually an increase of $8,600. Initially, it was $8,300.
The reason I'm struggling, I was trying to find it in this report and maybe I just overlooked it. I don't see it.
This was the latest figures, Mr. Reeves, as of this last Thursday. I think that you're looking at may have been the week before. I'll maintain it.
Okay, well, you understand why I'm struggling.
Yes, sir.
So that's $8,600 more dollars?
Yes, sir.
Secondly, it says his salary increased to $60,000 per year for some...
Mr. John Bellamy, we did not put a match on that. That's an increase in the grant. The counties, the only match that we put up is for the proposals, for the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan.
I had no plans of putting anything in the salary, just in case that helped me. I wouldn't think about that. I was just looking at another increase.
You say that $60,000 coming out of the grant?
It's part of the grant, but we don't put a match to that. The grant was 1.16 million, which was the salaries, furniture and equipment, things that's needed, and we don't match that part of it.
Well, if we had participated at this point, we'd have, I know, $15,000 already in BRAC and then there was something else we paid.
Twenty...
Seventeen, almost $18,000.
It keeps escalating.
Now, the two people feel that it's keep escalating. The two people are going to keep escalating and I've already got my foot on the brake.
I'm a spreadsheet type of person. Is there some way that what you just read there can be shown in a spreadsheet?
Absolutely.
Do you get a report as a BRAC representative of the monthly expenditures and income and so forth from this operation?
We have not gotten a monthly. I can look at the last, I could ask for an update, but they have showed us the expenditures, but they're not monthly.
I don't think we see them. I'd like to see.
No, each time I read this, and maybe it's just the way it goes, Harney County, Cumberland County, Robinson County, Bladen County are the predominant players at the table. That's what these reports show me. Why that is, maybe because they're the people speaking up, I don't know. But that's certain. And I may stand correct, where's Greg Taylor from?
He is Bladen. He's the at-large representative for tier-two.
And Scotland is what a tier-two, two county.
Any further questions? Thank you. When's the next meeting from Brack?
June 24th, Scotland is the next Brack incident.
Right. Thanks a lot. All right, now we move on to monthly financial reports of the month beginning of April 2007.
Yes, you have the monthly copy of the financial report. We have hit our budget for Avalon Taxes collected, which has been used in a typical recent region, April timeframe, met the latest. Most of the expenditures are running under their target at this point. The few that you see at 100% are quarterly appropriations, as is stated in the memo. Glad to entertain any questions you may have. You also have the monthly sales tax report.
Couple of these are quite a ways below budget for just what a month and a half left in our fiscal year.
September 21st.
Juvenile detention?
Juvenile detention is where we pay for juvenile to be held in juvenile detention units from our county and other units. That runs, usually runs behind on the billing. And also hopefully it's a good sign, but we have to budget based on previous history to make sure we have enough, so.
Court facility is not a very big budget, but that was way under, that's only a 20%. Is that...
Central courts invoices and usually towards the end of the year, we'll get some dues and subscription invoices from them.
I hope not 8%.
No, we usually underspend in that category. They usually budget money for some capital and the last couple of years have not spent it. And we account for that each year in the fund balance appropriation of what you see in the budget document there.
Can you roll that over?
No, sir.
The one that really caught my eye was Internal Services, you used zero?
That is a formula mistake. I think you caught that? It used to always be a zero budget and that's probably where the formula mistake is coming from. We'll double check that. No, ma'am, we, as you can see there, have spent $51,000 of the $67,000 budget. That's where we account for our copier contract and our postage.
So I guess, you know, my first thought when I was looking at this and seeing that, you know, quite a few of them were, they were just a short period of time. I didn't know whether they were some accrued or whether, you know...
All right, several of the expenditures will run a month behind, such as Medicaid will run a month behind, a lot of your daycare, et cetera. So we will have a large amount of expenses that are incurred in July that will relate back to this fiscal year. In addition, you know, we do have some wrapped salaries that have occurred and that's not uncommon and that's why we build in fund balance appropriation every year. If you look in the document, there's an amount listed in there for next year at 1.2 and that's for cover for the fact that we hopefully will overcollect our revenues and hopefully normally underspend on expenditures and that's built into the budget each year. But yes, ma'am, we will have some expenditures coming in well after the end of the year. We usually run our accounts payable out through the middle of August.
And the other one, Lisa, was the family-centered casework. That's at 27.5% of budget.
That, Ms. Potts, has used an intern somewhat this year to take advantage of other sources of revenues and to keep that budget as low as possible since his county funding paying for that now instead of a grant.
I would say that our department has to do a very good job of watching their budgets and I think that's a big need for that. Okay, any further questions? Do your motion to approve this report by the...
Someone.
It's awesome. Although in favor of say aye. Any opposed, say no, so forth. I now recognize Mr. Coe, I believe, for presentation and you have it in your supplemental agenda last night.
Mr. Chairman, I was contacted by our regional manager, probably somewhere last Thursday, to provide some information as far as the vehicle maintenance, as you know, which currently contract with Taylor Automotive on Hawkins Avenue. We entered a contract in December of '04. This thing would be 18 months with a two-year consecutive, one-year terms and is set to expire on June 30th, 2008. I provided two spreadsheets for you showing the expenditures with the CSAM in 2003, 2004. And if you look at the bottom total, it's $189,547.37. And the next spreadsheet shows a full year with Taylor Automotive, which shows the expenditures of $173,153. That's just for comparison. With current charge rate with Taylor Automotive is $50 per hour. They asked for an increase in July of '06. The current labor rate is $51.87 an hour. Don't know what questions you may have as far as the contract.
How many contracts do we have that get put out for bid?
Each department handles their own contracts, so it's hard for me to say in total how many there are.
And there is oversight of that?
Each department is responsible for handling those contracts and if they're over $20,000, they have to come before this board.
Well, as far as the bidding process is concerned, I believe General Statute covered that, Mr. Oil.
And each contract does have to have a pre-audit certificate by the finance director. Have a pre-audit certificate by the finance director to ensure that funds are available.
You asking us to do anything today, Mr. Coe, or just for information?
Just for information. I was just presenting some information.
Will you have a contract coming back for us?
Probably start bidding it, start looking at it in January, be about eight. And we'll rebid it. What we're trying to do is get on a three-year term. So it looks better.
How are your departments responding? At one point, you know, I was here when we started implementing, at one point we were getting different comments about service.
That's been known, if you remember, even with the CSAM, you can't, it's hard to really satisfy everybody. When I carry my vehicle to an auto dealership, I won't complain and I've got, pass this around, I've got email and all the department heads asking for their input, if they're happy with it or not. And it's the same. You get some departments that are not happy, you know, some are very well pleased. I think overall, our turnaround with our satisfaction with the turnaround of vehicles has been exceptionally well because they're in for profit, they're in to get them in and get them out. And I think it's been the big plus with going with an outside.
What about the Sheriff's Department and Colts?
Sheriff's Department, they were happy with it.
Do they have rowers?
Yes, they do.
Because I believe when we first started talking about that...
All vehicles come through, all health department DSS that come through General Services, they're delivered over there. We check them out to make sure what they're asking for is legitimate. We care to tell our automotive, anything with Sheriff's Department, Colts, Emergency Management, they take their vehicles directly to them and we have quarterly meetings with Taylor and everybody involved to make sure that your issues are resolved, like they've been overdealt or overcharged, whatever. We have a problem with Colts. There was a problem with some transmission work and we've sat down with Taylor Automotive and given Debbie the authorization if she wants to bid her stuff out separate. She has loved to do so.
They do have that option.
Let me ask you, they have that option as long as they don't pull it out and start costing us more?
That's correct. I've asked him to give Taylor Automotive a chance to quote on the...
All right.
To make sure that we are getting the best price.
And see what the dealer offers. Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask you before you go, Zach. We were talking about the Stanley Park Dam earlier. Have you had the chance to get with Emergency Management to find out if they've done any research on seeking grants for people living in that area who might want it?
I started with Eric on it a couple of weeks ago and I think most of the location, the grant money was for relocation of homes and I actually have a concern now with the homes downstream are actually in floodplain. According to the map that I've seen, they were on the edge and actually got in there. I don't know if part of the structure, they have some outside structures actually in the floodplain, but that's what we're trying to look into now is updating our information as far as the flood maps and try to approach it on that angle. If there is houses in there, can we go after some grant money to, I was going to say remove the homes, but actually approach it that way rather than actually, you know...
At least approaching about mitigation. Mediation can elevate, it can do several different things, but this is the time to do it. Last year, the rent came out between April, the end of April and June was the deadline, so we need to stay on top of it. But the other side of that coin is, if I'm not mistaken, last year, the flood map people came down to North Carolina and started doing all our maps. So you may want to check with the Emergency Management and see if they didn't already update it.
I'm pretty sure they updated.
I think they have.
They updated.
Now, that money comes through FIBO, right?
It really, yeah, mitigation has some, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a Department of Agriculture grant that comes also as an independent to take care of floodwater property. As an independent grant.
Let's get off sale on that project. You know, we have to have something underway, it's not the money set aside. It's actually a design and process, so.
You can't do without the money, can you?
Got to have the money first. We can't leave the money just sitting there. It's got to be, we've got to bid it out.
We got some I'm not a work with. We don't want to get carried away.
I mean, yes, we've been there with it.
We got some bad.
I've been here since '94 and we actually had a first problem in 1996.
This is the first time the help money's been allocated?
Yes.
What you're saying is we have to have a work in progress and it's been in progress for a long time. The Ranger keeps in pretty good touch with the folks down there and they have an alarm that they check, I believe quarterly, is that right, or monthly?
Monthly.
That goes to every one of their houses. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coe.
Chairman, I have a report that I just kind of passed around that takes, I think will satisfy a request from the last work session regarding the tax base. It takes and shows you the real property, personal utilities and registered motor vehicles by district for 2006 and 2007. It'll show you the net gain or loss and the percentage increase. This is based on what was used as far as computing the recommended budget. We have not gone through and updated those numbers because built into those numbers is an amount for appeals and until that appeal process is complete, we can't really adjust the numbers because it messes up the appeal process. I can tell you to date, we have reduced the G01 or the countywide $7.6 million, but that was built in to the base that was used for the budget purpose. They, Lisa's Faulner's group, is working diligently to get through the appeals process as quickly as possible and to get the referrals to the Board of E and R. Also at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Faulner to come up to answer any questions you have. Plus, I have to say, I've kind of got her down here on some false pretenses. I've actually asked Ms. Faulner here today to recognize her for the fact that we have had two in the last week, in two days, I would see two very complimentary comments, phone calls and one, a personal visit from a citizen.
and one a personal visit from a citizen, complimenting Lisa on her diligence in dealing with the public on questions etc. related to this revow. And this is a very tedious time for them, very time consuming time, and it's quite an honor when someone comes up and wants to speak to you, I have not had a negative phone call about this process yet, instead I'm getting very positive phone calls, one lady who's been undergoing chemotherapy, I think found her notice after the fact, came by, though Lisa spent 30 minutes with her, taking time to explain it, another gentleman came in, had had some concerns over the summer, people coming on his property, but came back in with some questions, Lisa took the time to spend with him to make sure she knew it was a potential touchy situation, handled it with kid loves, instead of walking away, all right, he came downstairs and asked to speak to the manager to express and compliment her on the customer service that she shone, and I know we have an employee of the month process and everything, but I thought it was, would be timely to go ahead and recognize Ms. Faulkner for an outstanding way of dealing with the public at this time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
We're good about putting people in.
I don't believe anybody has any question of you. We just want to brag on you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. All right, go to the next item on the agenda. Back to item G, this is consideration of contract to hire a new county manager. Each of you received a copy of this contract in your Friday mail, or package that was delivered to you, and I have contacted most of you, I believe, or all of you, and answered the questions that you had about the contract, so I would entertain a motion to approve the contract that I have in hand, signed by the candidate, waiting for my signature.
So moved.
Any discussion, although favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Lisa, would you go over to Ms. McGee's office and bring the candidate in? Take a recess in a couple of minutes. John was with us in 92 and 93 as our finance director, and he moved from our employ to the town of Morrisfield where he was town manager, that was the beginning of his managerial experience, and he'd come to the podium, John, the light just came back on. But anyway, he has a lot of financial background and also a managerial experience. I think we're real fortunate to get him, to have him come back.
Now I can talk? Just want to thank you for having confidence in me and hiring me, I look forward to working with everybody, and it's good to see some old faces around the table here that I worked with while I was here, so. July 1st will come quickly and, you know, get, hit the ground running and look forward to it.
Easy part, the hard part's over, isn't it?
Y'all are passing the budget, that's easy, that's hard.
First part was putting it together.
We'll have two before July one, you'll be safe on that, okay? Now you can come on up and shake everybody's hand.
Yes, sir. Delighted.
I bet you're excited about this, aren't you?
Welcome back, yes I am. Welcome back.
John Crumpton? Nice to meet you.
Justin Story.
Hey, Justin. Nice to meet you, put a face with that voice there.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, now, Mr. Chairman, comments, Mr. Bass? Be sure.
I'm glad to see John.
I just, I guess for the scheduling for the second work session for the budget, you said you could get our public room tonight.
Mr. Gavin?
I have, my comment is based on the interview process that we went through in regards to Mr. Crumpton, I have to say, it gave me a very newfound enlightenment on the problems other counties have in the state, and I wanted the citizens of Lee County to know, we might bicker back and forth, our issues here in Lee County pale in comparison to the issues down east and in the west. Now, our issues are updating a school, you know, taxes, you know, they seem big to us, but when you, when you, when you talk with somebody else who are dealing with, well, the basic, I don't have enough road, I don't have roads enough to even, I can't throw enough money at somebody, the county, there's no, there's no way I can get anybody to come in here and have a plant in my county, they don't, they can't get their product back. You know, our kids, the ones that get out of our education system and go to college, they never come back, we don't have that problem here, and I just want to let the people know how great Lee County is compared to other counties, and, you know, how, what, how bright our future is in the next five years, that's my comments.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just want to compliment staff, Lisa, for her hard work, her entire staff, they have done one heck of a job getting everything together so far as the budget, and as well as the Finance Committee, that's been a lot of hard work, and I commend them all for what they've done. Mr. Reeves?
I'm impressed with that junior house member sitting over there.
I don't put that on me.
We still have a bit more work to do on our budget, and I would ask that everyone be patient, continue to work together, and we'll get it done.
Okay, the chairman has a couple of things, the National NACO Conference is only held in Richmond, Virginia, the 13th through the 17th of July, and we need to appoint someone as our voting delegate to that, to that convention. To date, I believe Mr. Lamond and I are the only two that are going, so I would recommend that we appoint Mr. Lamond as our voting delegate for that conference. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion, although the favors say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose say no, so forth.
Now that we got that, we, I want to go up, now we got the one that does.
Tricky, tricky, tricky.
We know the issues they're voting on, so we can have some discussion on that.
Well, one of them is just the election of all, the second round, rather. Also, we, I've been talking, especially Mr. Lamond and I, about that, we do not have a farm agent in the county, and I wrote a letter to North Carolina State University Cooperative Extension Service requesting that they consider giving us a full-time mortgage, and I have received an answer to that letter indicating that they will be coming down sometime in the next couple of months, I guess, to address that issue with us. Also, Mr. Chairman, I've already received letters of support in reference to that from Pilgrim's Pride and the Lee County Farm Bureau, and there's others that's going to be coming in to support that. I'm going to have the clerk to fix me a file to where I can have these readily available when they come down, at least you'll, you'll know and just leave them know exactly what they are. And also we received, and I hope you should receive the information that was requested from the Animal Health Association. Any further business? If there's no further business, we'll stand in recess until seven o'clock tonight at the courthouse where we will hold public hearings, first of all, on the budget, and then two public hearings on rezoning of the land. Stand in recess.
Fun starts in the parks, Lee County Parks and Recreation is your starting place for recreation and events, youth and adults alike, call or log on to leacountync.gov, Lee County Parks and Recreation, committed today for a better tomorrow.